Urban Planning portion to discuss the survey results and then to receive feedback on the survey. So for those that don't know me, which I see a lot of familiar faces, but my name is Dave Beach. I'm the City Manager for Westview. Been with the city since 2005, came up through Public Works and then in 2019 I had the honor and privilege to lead the great team in this one family work and continue to serve the wonderful community in a different capacity. Others here tonight, Mayor Council, Mayor Sample, Mayor Proton, Montgomery, Councilmember Brett Hart, and then I know that Councilmember Carol and Matt Hart will be here. Sorry, Claybri, I combined them. Sorry. And then also here is PGL Architects. They'll be handling the design on the buildings. It's Jeff Gerber, CEO. Ryan Horton will be Assistant Principal. He'll be working on the urban planning portion and then Justine Markowski will be working on the buildings. So you might see a different person from the buildings portion. And then we have Terrain Studio. They are the urban planning consultant that'll be handling the outdoors, the outside space. We have Scott Selini, Principal, and then Fay Pang, Associate. And then lastly, due to scheduling, I guess we weren't able to have the survey consultant present tonight, but they're attending remotely. So I'll ask a little patience on that because we're going to have to make sure that they're hearing the comments or the questions that'll come at the end. And then we have an associate staff present as well. And so I just want to thank you all for taking time to come out tonight to learn more about Phase Two of Facilities Master Plan and their new planning concept. Just to refresh, Phase One relocates the current Public Works facility that's just down the street here between Milton and Amherst and then on the north side of Milton. That is going to be relocated to city property just outside the city over basically by Good Company Seaton. The project currently isn't permitted. We expect hopefully to get a permit in the next month and be under construction by late summer. And so the holdup there has been basically re-flattening that site because it was two parcels. And because we're in Houston, we have to go through the Houston process. Phase Two, which is what we're here tonight for, includes three parts. The first part is the urban planning and that is basically the exterior space, the streetscapes, those types of things. And what that's going to look at is, the survey we'll discuss tonight was looking about whether there was support or not to further evaluate possible improvements to the civic area, civic center area, which I'll define as Rice to university, college to audit. And so the survey wasn't about presenting concepts that were done deal. It was really about trying to gauge the community's interest and further looking at this because if something came back overwhelmingly not supportive, then why wouldn't we want to try to incorporate that into a plan? The second part's going to be the new buildings. So Phase Two will relocate to the Public Works site when that's built. A new community building, senior center, and library. Just since everyone, I have a captive audience, June 4th, there will be a town hall meeting on the buildings. Now, urban planning, so there's a little bit overlap. And that will be to solicit community feedback on what, how the buildings should consider, what deal, I mean, basically, we're going to be listening to the comments coming on those new facilities. The issue of, and I've had some questions on those buildings, and I understand I said the term, but whether they're one building, two buildings, three buildings, one-story, two-story, all of that will come out of the design process and based upon feedback between, from the residents, stakeholders, boards, commissions, and council. So nothing's been decided and that's why when you see the boards now, they just really show the site location for the new facility because what comes out of the design will determine what goes on that piece of property. Lastly, the third part, and really doesn't have much to do with the civic center, is looking at the rec center. So I'll call it Part Three. Currently Parks Maintenance and Operation is located at the rec center and they will relocate to the new Public Works facility. And that space over there will then be repurposed to the rec center. And I, probably hard to believe, but that building is 14 years old now. So while we're doing that review of how to repurpose that space, we're just going to take an overview, refresh on the whole facility because over the years we've heard, you know, comments about a larger weight room, cardio, those types of things. Is there, is the building still meeting the needs? So that third phase will kind of be separate from this, but that'll, that'll be looking at renovation and repurposing that space that is currently being used by Parks Maintenance over there. So back to tonight. The town hall, this town hall is on the urban planning portion of the project and its goal is to solicit feedback from residents. And then basically on the elements that you would like to see evaluated and the elements you would not like to see. So the agenda for tonight, Ryan Youngwood, On Point Insights will kind of go over the survey. At the end, we will open up a Q and A on the survey itself. Once we're done with that, Ryan will log off and then we'll turn over to the urban planning portion of it and that'll be led by Jeff Gerber and Scott Selini. And then we'll have, they'll do a little bit of a talk and then it'll be solicit feedback. There'll be Q and A. We'll ask you, we're limited on our stuff, so we have a mic. Raise your hand and then we'll probably repeat the question for everyone to hear. And so be patient, we will get to you. If everyone's hands go up, it'll just take time. And then lastly, at the end of the meeting, we'll be around. You can ask questions again and one-on-one and those types of things. I have plenty of business cards, but if you need to contact me, my information's on the website and go from there. So lastly, I understand there's some attendings that have some discussion, their focus is more on the buildings. I would ask you to hold those comments until June 4th. This, tonight is about the urban planning and the exterior, the outside space and what we would like to see or what we would not like to see. So we all want to cover. And as I mentioned, we'll raise hand and then, thank you again and I'll show up and then we'll get to the presentation, but I appreciate your patience. So Ryan, Ryan, it's on you.
Perfect. Thank you, Dave. So as Dave said, this is the Urban Planning Survey Dashboard for Westview and very excited to present these results to you. On Point Insights was commissioned to conduct it. The survey went from April 17th to May 7th. We got 526 surveys, which given Westview's population provides us a 423% statistical margin of error, and that's about 10% of households, which is a, is a great response rate for a city. We saw feedback on a number of different areas regarding urban planning and possibilities in the space just to gauge, as Dave said, interest and support for this type of exploration about pedestrian safety, parking, green space, community gathering space, among other things. We'll just jump right into the responses. We can see a percentage of each area in Westview of the responses, slightly more than like a standard population for Area Two and then even from the other three areas. Looking at our demographics, mostly middle-aged, older, some, some younger respondents and some older than 75, but mostly 40 to 75 was our responses. Slightly more females and mostly long-term residents, some newer residents, but definitely about half have been here for 20 years or more responding to the survey. The half have children at home, half do not, and the vast majority own their home. So this is the introduction that respondents to the survey saw before they started answering questions beyond the demographics questions. And this just shows the current layout of the civic center, where the buildings are located, that they'll be discussed and introduces the purpose of the survey that Dave's already talked about. Then we showed them images of as the civic center is currently, some of the roads and a couple of green areas, just to refresh people's memory of what they're talking about. And then Matt asks them to rate the civic center across these four dimensions as it is currently. Pedestrian and safety was rated the highest and this is a scale of very good, good, okay, poor, and very poor. But all the spaces were rated generally good to okay. Some felt it was poor, some felt it was very good, but mostly good and okay. Then we moved on to the conceptual possibilities type thing were introduced such as additional green space and seating areas, additional relaxing open space, family-friendly areas, places for city-sponsored gatherings, additional walking and pedestrian areas. There's side-by-side images of, current images on the left and then just a conceptual, to show what is possible and sort of give people's imagination in line with what we're talking They rated the appeal of those different attributes of increasing pedestrian areas, relaxing space and family-friendly, and increased green space were all rated very appealing and somewhat appealing by 75% or more for, for all three of those items and about just over 7% appealing rating for space for city-sponsored gatherings. So generally, all of these things were liked by people with some feeling that they weren't Now, this is a key question to, to what Dave was talking about as to whether or not they would support the city exploring these kinds of options. And we have a total of about 67% of either very supportive or supportive. So 67% supportive and then combining the unsupportive and very supportive brings you up to about 19%. And then we showed the Phase One and Phase Two, the various phases of the buildings being moved around, public works, buildings going out. As Dave described, we have images so that they could understand how those would change and then ask their feedback on the urban planning possibilities here that the cities are exploring. So we asked residents, what planned improvements in the civic center area are most important to you? And they responded by selecting the three that they felt should be most important. So the percentages are, the percentage of people that selects this as one of their three most important items, consolidating new buildings to create green space was most important to residents at 41% response. More trees, more efficient parking design followed closely in second and third. And then the next five or six or so are pretty close, given our 4% margin of error. Traffic calming measures, enhanced crosswalks, wider sidewalks, pedestrian areas, more grassy areas, relaxation areas are all important to people, but not quite as much as green space, trees, and efficient parking. And then this question showed an image of, I'm actually not sure if that's Milton or Amherst, but we're looking at Milton Street and Amherst Street between College Street and Outed Street. They no longer serve residential homes. And so we wanted to know how residents feel about partial or full closure to give more flexibility with urban planning and address parking in more efficient ways. And residents were quite supportive of this. 48% very supportive, 18% supportive. And so that's 66% total support and only 7%, 12% were unsupportive or very unsupportive. Then we asked residents, with potential for more room in the civic center area could meet many civic needs and host periodic events. And then we asked them, which ones their household support? They could select all that applied. So community events, areas for small group gatherings, and cultural events were rated highest, followed by passive areas to relax, holiday events, and city-sponsored gatherings. And less so, but also selected by about a third to quarter residents, tree lighting events, and public safety events. In terms of overall support for the plans that the city leaders have to make the civic center a more functional civic area with more walkability, places for relaxation, and room for civic functions, general support is 45% very supportive, 23% supportive. So again, that's 68% general support, kind of similar to the question we asked earlier. And some, of course, are unsupportive, 11%, 9%. But you know, you're comparing 20% and 68%, definitely majority support to further explore this. And then here we can look at overall support compared by a given variable of demographics. So this is showing children in the home versus households or individuals that do not have children in the home. There's clearly more support by people that have children in the home versus no children. And we can change this to look at other things such as how long residents have been in the city. Like we saw earlier, there were a lot of residents that have been here for 20 years or more, still generally supportive. And then the newer residents are even more supportive. You can also look at it by area, in terms of general support. Pretty similar from Area One, Three, and Four, all having about 75% or so supportive. And then Area Two, slightly less at 56%, still the majority supporting the plans. And then we can see our distribution source of a lot of emails, social media, postcards, and web. We tried to do a lot of channels to get a representative sample. We feel like we were successful with that. So overall, looking at the data, I think we can see that we have a representative sample that looks statistically valid and general support, although of course, not complete agreement, not unanimous, but general support for the plans as they were presented. And I'm...
Hey, Ryan, can you, can you hear me or does it...
Yeah, I can hear you. So that's all I have in terms of presenting the data and I'm happy to answer questions about the survey and the survey process.
So is there any questions about the survey? Raise your hand. We got one? Yes?
How did the demographics of respondents compare to the actual demographics of the city?
So the question is how the demographics compare to the actual, of the survey respondents to the actual demographics of the city?
It's quite similar, although I think it's skewed, skewed slightly to Area Two, so that's not even with the population. But you know, the civic center is in Area Two. And then skewed slightly older, I think, to the actual population, but not by much. And then gender is also skewed slightly female, but that's typical of all survey responses. Women generally respond to surveys more than men.
Any, any other questions on the survey? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm going to play devil's advocate a little bit here. Sure. I think, I think, you know, people are going to be quite receptive in, in concept to new and shiny things. The question I have is who actually is going to use them? How much would they get used? And I noticed that in the early part of the survey, you were pointing out that something like, I don't know, it was, you had, how are the services today? There was, you know, good enough, something, okay. Something like 80% of the people said it was okay or better. So that kind of, you know, makes me wonder, is there really support for specifics as opposed to just everybody likes new and shiny things?
All right, so I'll, I'll do my best, that's what. So what the survey asked was, is there support to look at these things? It's not sitting there saying that they're done or locked in stone. It's whether we should consider it. When the city goes and spends and puts the new facilities in, we've kind of locked that footprint in for the next 50 to 100 years. And so the whole way the urban planning portion came out to do due diligence before we construct new buildings, that we have an opportunity that won't come around for a long time because once the buildings get put on the sites, that can affect how the, the outside space is. So we want to make sure we take your due diligence to look at the outside space, should it be improved? And maybe it doesn't get improved right now, but if you have the future plan for it, then it can be also implemented as you go, but you can position the buildings to take advantage of those planned expansions. And I'll give you one example, the small water tank. Right now it's there, but there's some discussion that potentially you move it to the north side and you give more space to where those new buildings are. So your question isn't about shiny new, it's really about should we look at it? And then there'll be feedback from the public on whether that's a good idea or not.
Just a comment, I'm a little bit surprised that 10% response rate is considered significantly valid.
That you, Ryan? Did you hear?
Yeah, I heard. Well, the specific wording, surprised that 10% response rate is...
So the question was, how is 10% considered a good response rate?
Because you have a, at large populations, like let's say if it was a group of 100 employees, then 10% response rate would not be good because that would be 10 people. But the way that statistical significance works with populations is as populations get larger, you can take smaller segments and still be representative because the total number of respondents, 500 to 600, is, is quite good. And we've done a lot of surveys and once you get close to that 500, 600 person mark, when we're talking populations ranging between 10 and 50,000 people, the data is not going to change by more than a couple percentage points in either direction if you add another 500 people or another even 1,000 people.
50 to 100 years. How old are the current structures? Because I don't think most of them are even 50 years old.
So the, this building was built in the 40s. Senior Center, I'm sorry, the library in the 60s, the senior center in the 70s, early 80s. The Public Works facility was built in the 50s. So you're looking at buildings that are 70, 80 years old, somewhere a little bit in the 60s. So fire station was built in the 50s, so. Real quick, I'm sorry, you're right. Is there any other questions on the survey portion per se? Because then we can, we can focus on, yes?
Can you broad brush lay out where the survey areas 1, 2, 3, and 4 are?
I can do that. So the survey areas were based upon the recycle route. So if you're a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, or Friday recycle route, that's how we broke out the city because it breaks into four chunks, approximately, is similar in household size. Any others?
Sure.
Okay. Your, your point about the rec center, the rec center updates, that's only 12-year-old building, right? 14. And I don't know, that just is alarming to me that it's so new, that it's already been very updated.
So the current Parks Maintenance Operations are located in that facility. When they relocate, then the space would basically set empty. So we're going to need to repur, when I say need, to utilize the space, we want to repurpose it. So it's to take a review. It's no different than houses. The facility was built in 2010. Have the needs changed? So are we, do we have a need, are we seeing a change in the programming? And so we're not talking like a tear down, rip down. We're talking you might pull, blow out a wall, move a wall here or there, expand some space that's currently constrained because it's being more utilized. So that's really what it is. It's not a wholesale rebuild of the building. It's really to just, are there some elements within there that we can improve on for the community and the members? So that's what that one's about. Anything else on the survey?
Just a follow-up on her question. Can you remind everybody when this building or how many times this building's been renovated in the library? Because I know it's been done since I came here.
So this building received a, for what I'll call a cosmetic renovation back in 2011 when the police station was added on to the city hall. The library had a, for lack of a better term, a life safety improvement done in 20, I could be off on a year or two, 2016, plus or minus. And what that did is Irrigation added a fire escape to the second floor children's area that wasn't currently there and did just some cosmetic upgrades to it. So nothing really structural except for the, the stair that got added off the backside of the building.
Just clarification, I thought the library belonged to Harris County.
So the question is about the library and the, there was a thought that the library was owned by Harris County. The city of Westview owns the building. Harris County provides the library services. So in essence, we're tenant, I mean, we're the property owner and they're the tenant and your portion of your taxes that you pay to Harris County every year goes to provide those services. Anything else on the survey? I know we might have other questions. This way.
You, you mentioned the age of the buildings. But what function are they missing relative to what the intended? I mean, if you look at this from here, how it's huge on a weekly basis, what are we missing? I mean, it looks like it's a great shift of the inside. There are some places where maintenance costs may be getting so high for air conditioning and other things that, you know, we need to manage significantly up there to fix it or we build the building. And I haven't seen that case for some of these, for these items to say why we need to replace this building, the library, the fire station, I probably understand that more because the needs have changed.
Correct. So I'll answer that question. Any others on the survey? Okay, one second, please.
I would just like to know, why didn't you survey the functions that the citizens want now and in the future as opposed to the buildings that are there and what buildings should be in the future? What do people want, what do people want the city to be doing? What functions that either aren't being done or could be done there?
So the city completed a citizen satisfaction survey a little over a year and a half ago and the results were overwhelmingly positive. And based upon that, I, it's hard to answer why or why do we do, citizens, residents typically don't have a problem telling us what we're missing. But the citizen satisfaction survey was overwhelmingly positive. 90% believed that the city was going in the right direction. So when we talk about survey, what buildings and services, we're a full-service city. Police, fire, water sewer, garbage, trash collection, permitting, building inspection, animal control, urban forestry, code enforcement, the litney, street sidewalks. I mean, we're a full-service city. So the one facility, as we all know, they're not making any more land in this area. And so it led to the facilities master. Is there any other on the survey outside of, because I'm going to let him out because we got him to come in schedule-wise, so. Hey, Ryan? Thank you. So I'll get back to your question, but so the city, the Facilities Master Plan came about. The city was looking to put reinvestment into the facilities. So to kind of answer your question about what is it lacking? The question is, is what are we not doing? So we're asking those questions and we go through the design process on a building. This building was built in the 40s. That hallway was actually a patio that they just enclosed. The amount of float, and mind you, the amount of float that's out there, you'll see the floors popping all the time when it moves. floors popping all the time when it moves. This facility was not set up for a senior center. So yes, this room can hold quite a few people, but the senior center population is growing. The participation in the senior program is growing. So the question gets down to when we look at the new buildings, designing the facility to meet the current needs and the projected future needs of the community. And so when we look at what's the, what's the desire to just build new and approved because it's new and approved? No, it's about making sure the facilities reflect the community that can provide the services that the community wants. And when we go through the design process, there's going to be a lot of things that we're currently not doing that are going to be requested because I've already heard stuff. But I'm trying not to impart what I think because these are community centered buildings. The community's feedback is vital to these facilities. And at the end of the day, when we go through this process, at least we've learned. The decision can always, we can, we can end up with the same square footage or we can end up with different square footage. It's kind of like the outside space, which we're here for is urban planning, is once we go put the facilities in place, we've locked it down. And the, the current roads, when we said partial or full closure, I just pulled it off, it's, if there was 90% that said, do not look at that, then why would we come with an option? But it doesn't mean that there's no closure. I've heard a concern that we're going to just push parking into the neighborhoods. Well, that's not a good idea. Right? So the goal is to try to make more efficient parking. Can we make the footprint smaller? Can we get more open space, green space and put it back to the community in this area? So that's really what we're going through. At the end of this exercise, it'll really be where we're at. So I'm going to turn it over to them, Jeff and Scott, to go through the next phase.
Thanks, Dave. Good evening. So as Dave said, we're really at the very beginning of this process. We haven't drawn a single line, we haven't developed a single concept, we haven't done anything. We're starting by listening. We're trying to understand what is the community looking for, what is the community wanting to do related to their urban planning? We know that there's some buildings that are moving, so they're going to have some vacant property there. So part of this is what, what do you want it to look like as opposed to a vacant property once it goes away? That's one of the drivers of this whole process is to understand what it should be as we, as we say, to go back and do something in that, in their place, right? And just to touch on the, the uses of the buildings, that is what the June 4 town hall meeting is going to be all about, is what are the programming elements that the city doesn't have that they want to have to be considered to be part of those projects? So that is the entire purpose of the June 4 town hall meeting. So I would encourage you to come back and give us your feedback and for that meeting about the building contents so that we make sure that it does align with what the citizens want to be included. But in terms of the urban plan, which we're here tonight, so Scott Slaney's team with Terrain Studios, that is what they do. They've done urban planning improvements all over City Houston. You've probably walked through them, seen them, they do beautiful work and they do very effective work. And so we brought them on to lead this urban planning study phase to develop some ideas based upon this feedback that has been garnered from the survey and what we are going to get from hopefully tonight, some additional comments, how that you can get to talk to somebody as opposed to just seeing something on a, on a website page. So that is really what we're trying to get to you tonight. So there's just a couple slides here that I'm just going to roll through and get to Scott. So these are the slides that we were trying to just demonstrate. You know, these are the areas that, that any of the urban planning would relate to this zone. I know there's a lot of people that use this Airedo Trans walk through to pick up their kids at school, to go use the, the ball fields. There's a lot of pedestrian activity that happens in this area. We just did for the 20 some years of it working here. So I think it's a great opportunity to see if there's anything you want to do different than what's there. So I'm going to turn it over to Scott to walk through just what, what we intend to do with the information from the survey and what we get, what we're going to gather tonight.
Hi, Jeff. Thanks everyone for coming. I see so much interest in this topic. There's this little term here called placemaking and I thought I might start off with, what is that? I guess the way we think about it, it's sort of taking or turning a space into a place that is comfortable, that's accessible, that is lovable and social. And I think, you know, urban centers, city centers in America have changed over the past few decades. People want to use public spaces differently than they did in the 40s or 50s. They want to live in them. A gentleman back there asked a great question, what, you know, have you learned what it is that people want to do between buildings? How do they want to use this space? And that's, that's what we hope to hear this evening. And so, you know, there's, there's obviously lots of sort of ideas that one could think about in terms of placemaking. Probably first and foremost is walkable, safe streets. I know there's a lot of folks that park here to the library or who got the kids all at school or visit city hall or whatever the function might be. But the experience ought to be pleasant, ought to be safe, ought to be walkable, ought to be safe day and night, but safe at night without being notches to the residential neighbors who live around the civic center. But it's an important aspect of any sort of successful urban center or civic center. You know, there's a notion that has sort of emerged over the past couple decades about complete streets. The idea that streets don't have to be one dimensional, that a street can still work as a place to drive a car, park a car, walk, but they can also be managed and at times of the year they can be closed down and become spaces for festivals or church picnics or concerts or whatever the case might be, turkey trucks or, or, you know, left open for, for daily use. So, you know, the idea of sort of thinking about flexible streets or complete streets might be something to think about over the city. You know, green space, as the survey mentioned and as many people have commented, is becoming critically important to people's daily lives. You know, not only in terms of quality of life, but for real environmental reasons, particularly use of taxes. It, it rains a little bit here sometimes. It's really good if there's a place for that rain to go besides a curb in line and that sewer pipe and eventually in the bayous and eventually causing flooding. But I think anything we can do to introduce pervious surfaces, green spaces that act like a sponge to absorb runoff is, is smart, smart for the city and improves quality of life. And that sort of leads to green infrastructure and we're very interested in exploring how we can introduce principles of green infrastructure into the fabric of the civic center, which also produces green space. And lastly, the opportunities for community gatherings. You know, I think, I think one thing that we all strive for in the process of urban planning is to explore the multiple use of a given space. A street can be more than a street. A garden can be more than a garden. We need to spend a dollar to accomplish many things and we'll be, we'll be focusing on that as we. So really we're here to listen to you all.
So let me go back and just talk about timing because I think that's important for everyone to sort of understand. Slide four, please. So this schedule is, I think, published on the website so you can see what we're doing. The area up in the green is the urban planning. You can see that we intend to bring these ideas back to the public to get feedback as they're being developed. And so we have some planned times to do that. We're also going to have them represented at council workshops in June, but what we wanted was to be a lot of activity of developing some ideas just to see what is possible in the next several weeks and then bring that back to the community for feedback and goes, is something you have interest in talking about further or not? And, and then ultimately that information will, will feed into the development of buildings so that we will take clues from whatever the ideas that might come down the line in urban planning so that the buildings then complement those as opposed to fight those in the future. So now I'll open it up for questions about the urban planning process.
Forgive my ignorance, but I'm looking at these two surveys. Where were the Public Works Maintenance Building, Public Works Operations Building, Public Works Administration Building, and the Technology Out Building? Beating.
So as Dave said earlier, those are part of the project that is currently in permit that will be relocated. All of it, all of that is moving out of this part of the city and being relocated on your, what used to be your recycle, on the dangerous side, yes?
So the administration portion of Public Works, that will be temporarily relocated to Phase 3 is the new fire station and then Phase 4 is some expansion to the police department and then the repurposing of the fire station space at city hall. And when that happens, Public Works Administration and IT will come back into city hall. They were there in the 90s and then they left, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Hi, I have a question about safety. You're going to have these parks, these different areas, and you're going to move the fire department over to, for the libraries. Then you're going to have, you're going to pull those trucks out those bays and down that road by these parks. I'm, I'm wondering about safety.
So I think obviously we're going to need to accommodate that in whatever the design of those facilities are, for sure.
I have a question just in general. Is this project already approved and budgeted and the trades left the station or did residents ever have a vote? Is there input we can provide? We live on rice and so we've got a big rice contingency here because having what was formerly a fire station nestled on the non-residential street and having it moved to the corner, a two-story building reestablished with all the facilities that happen, imagine under the ground and fire station right in the middle of a residential street, a very narrow residential street where it's redlocked every single day, it just, there's concern about what input that our community has to even impact where we are at this point. I mean, we just got a survey on our door and we were like, oh my gosh, is this approved? Is it done? And we're just providing input on what the green space is going to look like? So can someone help clarify that?
So as we said earlier, the urban planning portion, it's, we're seeking feedback on elements or possible improvements to the outside space. The facilities master plan was done in late 2021, approved in 2022. There was town halls, we, if I go back and pull all of the information we put out into the public, it was 50 plus things that went out through the city newsletter, news articles, postcards to every house, is on the marquee. So the, what has been approved is the facilities master plan, Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, Phase 4. Just to reiterate, Phase 1 is the relocation of Public Works. Public Works, because to keep some of the facilities in the city centers, something has to go. If we try to build it on this site, then it would be without your services for a year and a quarter to a year and a half during construction. So you need to find an alternative location or you just go without. So the, during the facilities master plan, different buildings were looked at, different areas, and ultimately what it came down to was to put this facility over on the Public Works site where you could have appropriate parking, it would be more accessible to a population that might be some of the least mobile. This facility is not that. So that's what's been approved. Phase 1 is already in the works. Building, Public Works is moving over to the site. Phase 2, the funding for that has come from the sale of Rofino, arcathons, and some reserves. So Phase 2 construction of the facilities, there will not be, there's no debt issuance to be issued. So it's been planned for, for years, we've been putting money into the capital reserve fund to fund those improvements to minimize the, the burden on the taxpayer. So when it gets down to the elements there, this green space, those drawings were more inspirational, that's why we tried to say, picture what you can see, what, what it could be rather than what it is, but we want to get that feedback to see. So. So there was an extensive public engagement process back with the facilities master plan and that's all I can, I, all I can say on that one. I mean, I, I get it, lights are busy, if something doesn't register or hit the radar, you might not pay attention to what's, what's coming out from the city. We, when I look back at it, because I was told I was unaware, and I actually went back and looked at all of the stuff and I'll be happy to share that. You can email me and I will send you a list of everything that we put out on it. We do our best to get the information out, we just can't, unfortunately, it's the whole thing, we can provide the water, we can't force you to drink it. And we, and we do our best without trying to be overly burdensome, so.
So all these are in place, they're going to happen. Now we're just talking about what the green space looks like? And did the same sort of 10% of the population that filled out the survey vote on that or was it ever really a vote? Was it just some incremental surveys, like do you agree to keep looking at this and suddenly we have it? I'm caught off guard. Lived here 26 years and I wasn't paying attention enough to, to this plan.
What has been approved is the facilities master plan. So the current Phase 1 is funded, Phase 2 has funded, Phase 3, Phase 4 at this time or not. So when we say it's already done, I walked around the civic center to be with residents and talk and I've heard we're doing this for show and that could be further from the truth. I get it. We go through a process, I know more about West U than where I live and we do our best to get the information out. The problem is, once something hits the radar, then we go like, I didn't know about this. It was, it was done over the course of a year with multiple meetings, the marquee, we sent a postcard to everyone's house. I, I mean, outside of the direct mailing, I did have someone tell me we should have talked on everyone's door, but that, that would be a little bit time consuming. So the plan has been approved, the locations of the facilities have been approved. And so right now we're permitting, we've designed a facility to construct the new Public Works Maintenance Facility over there. These facilities would relocate down to there so we can keep the library and the senior center operational while we construct the new improvements. The, the question I get, and I'm trying to avoid getting into a discussion, but it's going that way, with the, with the fire station, we looked at evaluating upgrading the fire station in its current location. The problem is the footprint doesn't allow for it. They're going to find this flooding, but a fire station has to be ADA compliant. When we did the cosmetic, we did some dorm room renovations back in there. In 2011, we raised the height of the door about a foot and a half because prior to that, the fire trucks couldn't have the water cannon installed on top of it because it didn't fit in the bay. Now we can get it in, but they still can't do any work on top of the bay, the width between them. We looked at expanding the fire station within that, that footprint. The cost of that is just shy of $10 million, it'll require the relocation service, but you're still lacking addressing some of the major deficiencies in that facility. the major deficiencies in that facility. If you were to look at constructing a new facility over here on this side, you're about $13 million and four. If you construct a comparable building over at the existing facility, you're pushing almost $16 million. And it still requires the relocation of the services for that year, almost a year and a half. And that would be, fire services go outside the city somewhere where we have as appropriate space to park pumper trucks and all the other stuff. So when you look at the continuity, if we were a larger city and we just had available land, it would be a lot easier to find, but pieces have to move. And that's been the biggest challenge.
I will question, some of this has to be done, you know? And particularly, plans moving this stuff to the offsite is probably a good idea. What I question is the priorities. I've lived here for 35 years in West U, and I can't think of an infrastructure that is more important than the street flooding. And it looks like we've kind of jumped the street flooding. I live on the West Side, and we've jumped the priorities, and we're spending money on new buildings and relocating stuff, when we haven't fully addressed the street flooding.
So the city has taken an active approach to addressing the street flooding with the replacement of Buffalo Speedway in the east side, drainage improvements. West Side, that project's looking to be about $120 million plus. The city council and staff are doing evaluations on the West Side drainage improvements. I, that's what I'm telling you, actively doing that. That is a, from the time that the city said to go, you're probably looking at a seven to eight-year project from the time we say go. So by the time we get through approval, processes, and all those things, and the funding, I get what you're saying about your concern is that, and I hear you. But we have multiple needs, and that's what we're addressing. Someone else?
Within Phase Two, I mean, is there parking spaces within that design? Or is just the building?
So the parkings, the new buildings would have parking associated with the facilities. It'll determine the overall design of the building. So the program and how it's going to be used will determine the parking spaces. If the streets are closed, we would look to make parking more efficient, and not just like, close the street and the parking is not provided. We understand that parking is a priority. It's, it's, it's in high demand.
I'm fully supportive of this plan to sort of construct a new sort of senior center, library, et cetera. I think it's overdue, and I think it needs adequate amount of parking. One of my big concerns is that I think the factor or feature which received the highest support was additional green space. So my concern is, how will the final decisions be made on how much space is allocated to the buildings, to green space, to areas for the community, community receptions, et cetera, et cetera?
Thank you for that suggestion.
It sounds to me like people are confusing creating new parks with this, which is really, the urban planning is really just landscaping around the buildings, or like benches, or I mean, it's not going to be a brand-new park in the middle of the civic center, is it?
Did everybody hear the question? That's a great comment. And I think you might ask yourself the question, what's a park?
Right, it's not a park, it's just landscaping around the building.
And I think what's really enlightening here is that there's an effort by the city, and everybody involved, sorry, everybody involved, to think about architecture, infrastructure, and the landscape that wants. So the landscape of the green space is not just what's left over between a road and a building. It's all integrated, and that's what we hope to be supported.
I wish you guys can bring back the first slide with the aerial photo of the, of question, like the first slide. Yeah, the very first, yeah, the very first slide, yeah, perfect, yeah. So we actually live right here, right there, yeah, right here. So we're kind of affected, but thank Dave for stopping by our house. So we definitely were reached. Every day, we walk the Milton Street over there by this huge, you know, tank, which is quite ugly. And what a tank, yeah, I understand it's important. All this is just plain cement. Look at other areas, like here, beautiful trees, okay? Trees there. If we can replace that concrete and turn it into green space, I think that would be awesome. So we're looking at what, two and a half, three years of construction next to our house, but frankly, we're okay with that. Okay, so I think it's good, and I just wanted to support this plan.
Hopefully, it won't be two to three years of construction on this.
I just wanted to say one that I really appreciate, the effort the city's put into this design. I'm excited to see what we can do for Milton Street there. It seems like it's got a great chance to do some placemaking. You know, look at the people in the room, it's kind of an older crowd, but if you're out on these streets during the day, on weekends, it's families, it's younger people, and I really think that the city seems to be investing in that. But a question I have is whether all of this work can also come alongside safer crossings for the streets. I mean, we have very safe streets, but in other cities, we're seeing investments in bulbouts, and raised crossings, and those sorts of things. Now I was wondering if that was part of the project?
So, yes, I'll answer. So part of the thing we looked at was pedestrian safety improvements, wider sidewalks, potentially for traffic calming, so you'll get your bulbout, your chicanes. Do you have enhanced crosswalks, those types of things? And I think that'll all come out of the process of where to go. So council as a whole was looking at citywide, not to kind of go down, but looking at how do we make West U a more walkable city? And I think this is kind of the first start to that. We can focus on the core, and then it can spread out from there.
We should explain the configuration of the new senior center and the library. Are they the sidewalk? I have a hard time seeing.
So, so that is just showing the location. That'll come out, the shape and the design of the buildings themselves. That meeting will be June 4th, and that will start that process. So this is just the outside. And so once the outside is determined, it can help you place where the buildings, because can the buildings be placed in a way that will utilize some of the improvements that might come along with the exterior portion?
I saw one drawing where one was on top of the other.
So that was the initial facilities master plan. The question was, you saw one drawing where it showed a two-story or one-story. So the facilities master plan, those drawings you see in there were really mass-size studies. Could the site hold building that size? So we looked at a single story or a two-story? Because we want to make sure before you propose an area, what you're estimating the size of the building could fit there, whether any one or two stories will come out of the design process.
I guess I'm biased a little bit because I live in the 3900 block of Milton, so with all of this excitement going on, and then all of a sudden, we're going to maybe close 3800 Milton and Amherst, where are all those people going to park? I mean, I don't know if you're here with the fiasco that happened when they fenced in Huffington Park. That was, you know, quite the event, because people were using the park and blocking people's driveways.
So as I mentioned, displacing parking into the neighborhoods is not that. So when we talk about a partial or full closure, there's been no decision to close. So part of the conceptual design process would look at those options. And when you go and start putting pen to paper, and actual design of parking spaces, it might, let's just say if it doesn't work, it'll become very apparent. So the goal is not to push parking into the neighborhoods. Or if those roads closed, you incorporate parking into a more efficient parking lot, and you get more parking there with green space closer to the buildings. All of that'll come out of the process. So there's a lot of what-ifs, but that's part, that's what the design process is meant to do, is kind of look at those concepts. Bad, you know when you see bad, right? Everyone's like, that's not going to work. But we got it, we'll go through the thing and have the designers lay it out, and then we'll have an answer. So I can't answer you that we can gain, or it's an equal, you know, trade for a street parking with a surface parking, but the new buildings will have more parking.
I'm all for green space, and I think there may be some very good ideas here, but what I hear some community members saying is, maybe we take a breath from the city planning and rethink things that were expressed in 2011, 2021, which was the midst of a pandemic. So I think a lot of people were focused on health of their families and work, keeping jobs, and I don't know what the response rate was at that time.
Appreciate it.
I'm hoping that someone from the city can give us a concrete answer on what citizen feedback you're actually willing to take, because we were given this survey with these vague aspirational photos that were AI-generated, and asked general questions about green space. No one's going to say they don't want green space. But my neighbor and I met with you, Dave, I read the 75-page report. I still have not been given a reason for why the fire station can't go on Milton, and why these buildings can't be renovated where they already are. We were just told that that was determined, it was not going to be feasible. You've shown us a timeline through the end of 2025. And so I know the city a few weeks ago approved a million-dollar payment to an architectural firm, so what exactly is our feedback going to be used for? What part of this can we say no to?
I appreciate the feedback. I get back to the part of, nothing has been approved. So the feedback is in shaping what will be looked at and what will be considered in the concepts. Yes, through the facilities master plan. Yes.
Got a question for the planners, and we've seen a couple of really nice AI-generated streetscapes. A lot of the city land up there, or city properties are yellow, magenta, beige water tank. A lot of the gray in between is property owned by the church. If we, if the city spends a lot of money dressing up the streets, the church has a lot of parking lots along the side of it. Where's their buy-in if the streets get closed off?
The city's spoken with the church. The two largest property owners in the city civic center is the church, followed by the city. So a lot of the gray, we didn't show it. We did not show the church ownership property. They own a lot on the south side of the 3800 block of Rice. The church has been acquiring property. They have plans to do improvements to their property. They put it on hold, and so there will be discussion with the church, so that if we can make designs that are complementary to each other and not against and conflict, there's the potential to get more efficient parking, more green space and open space. So that discussion is happening, because the church has plans to do improvements to their property. That's where.
I guess a few related questions, and we just moved in less than a year ago, so we're catching up here. But you made the comment a few times that the master plan's been approved. I'm curious if that was a city vote or just approved by the city board, council? And then on the topic of the church, in the comment note, maybe it's best to take a breath. Like, if the church is buying land, we're buying land, we're looking at all of this, the church is talking about doing a bunch of work, everyone, everything's kind of checkerboard right now in terms of who owns what, does it make sense to take a breath and think about, okay, maybe we swap some land, maybe there's a better way to configure how everything's being laid out, and attack it at that point? Because it seems like maybe we're kind of trying to force pieces into different spots.
So, so we get back to, this is more, it should be on urban planning. The facilities master plan went through a public process. We held town halls that were very well-attended from all over the city. So the, the facilities master plan's been approved. We have the location of the facilities, and we're moving forward. That's, that's what I can tell you.
It's never been brought to the public. So I would ask, so you're telling us that Phase Two is said and done, and the fire station is going to that location regardless of what anybody says? I've lived on the 3700 block for the last 25 years. There are days I can't get down that street to get to my house. How are you going to put a fire truck down there?
So, no, I've been here 20 years. I'm very familiar with the streets. I was in Public Works, I understand the traffic. I've worked the traffic section, traffic council, everything, and I drive the city daily, so I'm very familiar with the thing. So when you talk about traffic generators, the senior center, library, and the community building generate trips, people coming, parking, and those types of things. When that moves over, there's a parking lot to handle that parking that's associated with these facilities. Okay. So your concern would be, I'm going to try to put this back in comments for the part, it's the parking, it's bad, and how, the truck, the truck, the, there's a rumor going around that the fire trucks were going to empty onto Rice. That was never the decision. They will still go their normal routes that they always go.
Okay, so can you share some audit turns that have been done to show that a fire station can get relocated from where it is right now to that corner? Are there plans to expand Rice and Oden Street to allow a fire truck to turn out?
Oden, so Rice, Rice is not being touched. Oden, Oden is already wide enough. It's wide down there. You have the driveway open for a fire station, so the trucks turn onto the road. No. That's, that's your, that's your opinion, I appreciate it. All right. She said, the answer of an audit turn study, if it hasn't been done, is a horrible answer.
So I understand that Phase One and Phase Two, the financial aspects of those projects are taken care of. What are the options for take, for payment of Phase Three and Phase Four?
Depending on when those move forward, that will be a discussion we'll have to have. So is it debt, or will it be cash reserves, or will it be grants? That'll be determined when we get to that phase, because to move forward, you have to have funding for a project. So the urban planning portion will be determined based upon what comes out of it, and then we go, some funds that were available that we can use for it.
So Phase One, Phase Two, that's done. Phase Three, you're looking for funding still. I have a question. If you do put it to the people for the first time, and they say no, you just mentioned possible sources of funding could include reserves, again, like Phase Two did. Is the city able to put it to a vote, the people say no, and the city just spend their reserves anyway?
So if you're talking about debt issuance, and it goes to a vote, if you, well, yes, typically, the council could come back. There could be a council the next year, two years, or four years. It went out to a vote. If you have cash, then city council is elected to represent the community. So I get back to this part of, the purpose tonight is to talk about the urban planning. I'll be more than happy to meet with anyone to talk about the facilities master plan and stuff like that. Right now, is there any other comments, and I'm not trying to cut it, on the urban planning portion of this project? So the question's about the footprint increase. I'll have to get back to you on that. So.
Thanks, Dave. The earlier question was about seniors intended, someone near senior maybe, halfway between. I want to piggyback on Alba's question about finances. I'm glad to hear that. So phase two includes the new library, the new community center. You're saying the surplus you referenced earlier is sufficient for that. Someone mentioned to me that in 2022, you sent out a bid for the fire station at like eight or nine million dollars. However, the fire station is in phase three. Just want to be sure that financially, that these two new buildings, the community center and the library are paid for with the surplus and that the fire station and the city hall renovation are not paid.
So the question's about funding for the buildings. Phase two has money from the sale over Fino, from LandCell, from the ARPO funds and from reserves. That's, so it's being paid with like cash and no debt. There wasn't a bid, I don't know if you got the information about a bid was submitted for a fire station. We've done evaluations on the building. Prior to just picking and moving a building somewhere, there is actually thought to put into it, contrary to some of people's opinions. I'm sorry about that. So there was estimates done on renovating the existing fire station in the current footprint, redoing the bay, making it a little larger, getting shell space. The cost of renovating the fire station in its current location, to make it an apple and apple for a modern fire service, is more costly to do it in the current location. And then you will be moving fire services somewhere else. That's all I can say right now. So we're talking a lot about the future, and I'm trying to stay here. And I understand the concern is the fire station. The city goal is to be a good neighbor. I'm gonna get chuckled. But how we design the elements of a building, we are respectful of the fact that we're residential 99%. So the facilities and how they impact the neighbors are very important. So the urban planning can be a way to mitigate and help offset any of those changes. We have concrete. Can we make it more beneficial to the community as a whole?
So talking about the urban planning and talking about it as landscape, I think it's not quite right. I think it's integral to the functions that go into the building. Those are what's gonna activate the urban space. So we can't do these two things separate from each other. I believe it's critical that this become an intergenerational space. It's not gonna be, you know, the seniors versus the young families. We need to all have this working together. We need to understand how the library hours work. Is that space just gonna be dead space when the library's closed? You know, why do all the old people have to put in one building together? Why can't we be integrated into the whole community? So I think it's really important to think about what is in the library? Is it gonna be something that is activating the whole urban context? And then the seniors benefit from that by being integrated into the community and being exposed to the young kids and everybody's, you know, working together as a community. And we're right by the school, got the senior center, we've got the library. What the space looks like is less important to me than how I feel and what activities are going on in there. We don't have budget for programming in our parks department. It's pretty slim. We operate on a very tight budget for parks. And all the improvements are pretty much funded by Friends of Westy Parks, and we have a slim staff. So they do an incredible job, but we do not have the setup here to do like an Evelyn's Park that has a conservancy to program and stuff. So we need to think about what is actually gonna make this space compelling in the heart of the city. And it has to do with what's happening in the building.
Thank you very much.
Were citizens involved in selecting the designers? I mean, they're already here.
So the question was, were citizens involved in selecting the consultants? So those are done at a public meeting, so ultimately residents can come. But if you're asking, were they part of the selection process? No. No. But everything's done at a council meeting, so residents can participate in the process. But there wasn't a citizen board for selection.
I did just want to clarify that there were only two town hall meetings, and that was in April, the same week in April of 2022, and less than 1% of the city was intended. So people have been very unaware.
All right, I got one. Any more?
I appreciate the focus on seniors of the comments of the greens and the green space and the buildings and it's all being integrated. My concern is for scale, and I mentioned this at the meeting that people didn't hear about. And so I know that's a June 4 thing, but I think what we're hearing is that it's all integrated and it's hard for us to separate it all out. So that's why.
Thank you.
Is there currently a fire safety issue or emergency services issue that needs response? Westy's not growing, so if we stop that, if everything is fine now, why are we worrying about the future?
So once again, this is urban planning. We keep going back to a fire station. The fire station is deficient. It was built in the 50s. It lacks proper decontamination space, storage space for equipment. It's not ADA compliant. Doesn't have wide enough space for doing maintenance between the trucks. You can't do maintenance on top of the trucks. You have to pull them out and inclement weather. So it's okay during the normal time, but when you're doing emergency responses and when you do repairs, doing it in a protected environment is important. The bunker gear is stored out in the bay, which would be considered a hot zone because you have carcinogens, even though you have an emission capture system, you still have diesel exhaust that gets on it. Then when you come back, you have to clean them. Then you put them back out in the bay in the humidity, they don't properly dry. So there's a lot of things that come to cancer prevention that our current facility lacks. There's inadequate storage for emergency operations, so we have it elsewhere. The footprint, if we were to expand the current building, we start adding, there's certain surface or functions that should be on the ground story of a fire station. If we start putting elevators in, because we would have three floor heights at, yes, we would have three floor heights at city hall. Each floor height requires an elevator. Each elevator eats up ground space, which then bites into what we have. So when we look at it, the city services have expanded since the 50s. I can show you some pictures of the earlier equipment that used to fit really well. So when we get to it, even though this city's not growing, our services are.
Yeah, I just have a question about, there's a Huffington Park on the left college. So just whenever you design it, make sure there's no parking lot on this site because there's a lot of kids going in and out and parked. So just take that in consideration. That would be like water tank area if you move the water tank. So just know that. And then I think the design of the building is next, but retain kind of westy feel, like you know, our downtown. I mean, I don't know. So it's westy, you know? Don't make like a very modern buildings, you know?
All right. So appreciate it if there's.
So I'm looking at these four annual features, 1935 parking spots around the existing community center, I don't see a sudden on that hill.
So you're looking at the existing spaces up there. So where you see the big, the question was about existing parking appears to go away with what's being projected. If I, so, so the question was, when you look at the current and you look at the one that's projected on the screen, it doesn't show parking. So where the tanks are, the buildings, when they go on that site, would have associated parking with them. So that'll be determined really by the size, the function, the use. There's some code to it, and then we try to put more on top of what code is because that's minimum.
How can you say that you have approved that location without saying that it can function in that location? I understand it won't get permitted if you can't get a fire truck out of there. I'm just concerned about how that's gonna work and how can you say that?
The question was about the fire station and the truck. The current, the proposed location's larger than the current location. So with the street setbacks and stuff, everything is similar. So we're able to get the trucks out of there, we'll be able to get the trucks out of the new location. All right. So, all right. So one more question.
If the fire station does move, it's still turning onto Oden, right? But it's driving all the way down Oden. So currently it turns out onto Oden and then immediately onto University. It's like hardly even has to stop.
So the question was about the turn, it's turning onto Oden. It will not change the response times? And what I mean by that, we have very good response times. And to go a block and a half from this, from this location down to the new location, it's insignificant in time. All right. So I hear you, but this is about the urban planning, not about the fire station. If you want to talk about the fire station, I'll be more than happy, but that's not the purpose of tonight's town hall. So is there anything else on the urban planning? So the question, so the question was, what's the urban planning portion of the project? Is it creating more walkable space? Would that be any better? Is that good? No, no. So. So your concern would be is with vehicle traffic and any pedestrian mobility? I understand. The fire station is currently in one of the more congested intersections, University and Oden. It sometimes goes down Oden as well. So they, it's not, okay, anything, I'm not trying to, but this is about the urban planning for phase two. Is there any more questions on urban planning? I'll be more than happy to talk about the rest of the facilities master plan. Anything on urban planning? So the buildings will be on, for the new buildings, that'll be on June 4 for the community building, senior center and library. And so with the new buildings, it'll be, here's the feedback on what you'd like to see in the buildings, those types of things.
But the only discussion point there is the architecture, the design.
It'll be, well, there's a longer one, so hold on. So June 4th is about, talking about what programs and city council. There's a town hall that'll be October, sorry, I'm gonna be off possibly a month. There'll be a town hall once we get further through the design process to show the concepts. Right now, there are no concepts for the shape and the feel of the buildings. So part of that is meeting with the users, getting feedback from, quote, the seniors who are using senior services. There's gonna be a discussion with the library district on the programming for the new library. It will be larger. It will have some additional programming for it. That'll all go into the process. The schedule's online. We've showed it here. It's also online at westytex.com/fmp. You can go to phase two, it's up and you can see what the schedule is. And it shows the principal meetings for the major. That being said, we can also add additional meetings if they're necessary. So, all right. Is it on urban planning? In the beginning, we've been sending it to that signup list, also to the general city news signup. As we get further down the process, if that list on the FMP for the phase two grows, we'll be just using that because that's people that are interested solely in that project. And we try to be respectful of putting stuff out that people aren't because then they can lead to people not paying attention or ignoring it because they're getting inundated. So that's where you can sign up. Okay, urban planning. Everyone says it's urban planning, but it seems to more.
For the purposes of urban planning, are the city officials and the architects familiar with where our children cross to go to school and to the ball field? Because when we met with you and you said, we're only moving the fire station in one block, we tried to explain that one end of the block versus the other end of the block is a difference of about 800 kids that cross the street at various times. And yes, we do have crossing guards that stop traffic at regular times. And you're talking now about fire trucks having to go down that part of the street.
Part of urban planning will look at pedestrian improvement, traffic calming. So we're going back to the fire station. And I've already, I understand that's a concern for you. So any other urban planning? So the question was, what is urban planning and what is incorporated? So the question was, what is urban planning?
You know, I think Lauren stated it beautifully. Is it integration of architecture, infrastructure? Sorry. Is the integration of architecture, infrastructure, open space and landscape with activities indoors and outdoors? I think that was stated beautifully. Did that answer your question?
So we'll be more than happy to talk to it after people are starting to leave. We're gonna wrap up. There'll be more opportunity. Okay. I do appreciate you for coming out. We'll be around afterwards to have more one-on-one discussions. And if you would like, if you want, my email's online and via card. And we can go from there.